Through the regular school committee meeting for August 27, 2024. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. First thing on the agenda, open public comments. I believe right now we have no open public comment, so hearing no objection. We're going to move on to the approval of minutes. We have a set of minutes from the executive session on July 29, 2024. Do you have any questions, comments, corrections?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes for July 29, 2024 as presented.
A second.
Great. Any further comment, questions, anything to add? All right, hearing none. All in favor for approving those minutes? All right, 5-0-0 in favor of approving the minutes. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move right on to the superintendent update.
So lots of updates, actually. Typically, I don't have an update until September, and there's lots to share, although today was our first official opening day with all teachers and staff. So much has already been happening in August. Last week alone, we had our leadership retreat, which is anyone that's in a leadership role, which is all of the administrative team, principals, system principals, department heads, team chairs for special education, our digital learning coaches, about 35 of us. And every year, the Craft Group hosts us at Patriots Place at Gillette. So it is a wonderful way to kick off our school year from their team to our team. So we're always appreciative of that every single year. But that was a great leadership retreat last Monday. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we had new teacher orientation and educational assistance as well. We've welcomed about 15 educational assistants and 18 new teachers. So that took place all last week, so a lot of planning by Dr. Burrows and members of the mentoring team as well. And then this week, we, well, actually too, if you've been out there, marching bands practicing, fall sports are in full swing, so lots taking place. And then opening day this morning, Michelle and Sarah, you were there, so you saw everyone, the energy that was there, which was great, exciting to see everyone. They were clearly happy. It was very loud in the auditorium with everyone being able to see everybody, which was always wonderful to see. That began this morning with Link Crew in welcoming our freshmen with our Link Crew leaders, which is always exciting as far as the transition program. We know high school can be daunting as far as that transition for our ninth graders, so having our own student leaders welcome them and then facilitate what they can expect and what it's going to be like and really serve as role models throughout the school year is a great program. That, I think it's been seven years now that we've had Link Crew taking place. Is that right, seven years?
Seven school year. Started six years ago.
Okay. And thank you for confirming my numbers. And then Web, where everybody belongs, for our fifth grade transition program, that's on Friday. So we'll welcome our fifth graders. So that's, again, a big transition. Excited, again, it's for kids, but there's going to be an information session that morning as well for parents, so they can have an idea of what to expect. So that's on Friday. This morning, as far as welcoming everyone, we had Karen, as far as welcoming her officially to the table, and a welcome again officially here tonight. So that was exciting. We've got a number of new faces, too, at the Ahearn. We have two new secretaries, we have a new secretary at the high school. We have many new people with extended day, which has been great. I mean, we said such a great extended day program. Nancy Martin does such a fantastic job. Bus drivers, fully staffed, which is awesome. So that's really exciting. And then also, in addition, food service. So a lot, a lot of hiring. Our administrators have been here all summer, working really hard and really making sure that everyone was set for the start of school. The next couple of days for professional development for teaching and learning. Dr. Burrows has worked really hard all summer with a number of people to get that going and ready. I don't know if you want to go ahead and make some comments about what's going to be taking place.
Sure. These are my favorite three days because everybody's together and everyone's really, really energized about the school year. We are very lucky to have fantastic curriculum leaders throughout the district. We have a curriculum day planned for tomorrow that they've been working hard on planning. And we also have a digital learning day happening on Thursday that's going to feature some really exciting new learning opportunities about artificial intelligence. So it's going to be a fun couple of days. And really, the goal of these first three days is to make sure that all of our teachers have everything that they need to feel successful next week when we welcome our kids back in our buildings.
And last summer curriculum work took place, too.
Oh, yes. I actually, I counted earlier today. We had 86 summer curriculum projects. And some of those projects were actually to plan for, some curriculum updates and some learning that's going to happen over the course in the next couple of days. So we're very lucky to have so many staff that make themselves available in the summer and are eager to contribute to that work. That is what helps us kickstart our year, so.
And there's so many other things that you'll hear with technology updates and then facilities updates, too. But before we get to that next agenda item, I just want to thank publicly all of the work that has taken place all summer by our maintenance and custodial staff and our technology staff. So much of it is behind the scenes for technology. It's not as visible, but it takes an extraordinary amount of work to get refresh and devices and where they need to be and all of the safety and security measures for students. It really is a yeoman's work. And then from the facilities and grounds, that is, the buildings are shining from going through and painting to floors to moving classrooms in many cases. Just, they do an outstanding job. They take such pride in the work that they do, and you can see it. When the teachers come back, everyone marvels at how great the buildings look. So really want to thank all of the technology staff and the facilities and maintenance crews because it is just amazing what they accomplish over the summer. The last thing that I will just update, because I'll have more of an update in September when we talk about enrollment and all of that, is with new teachers, we did add a kindergarten classroom at the Borough based on numbers. We were at 27 students in classrooms by adding an additional kindergarten class there. We also are having our newcomers that are kindergarten age eligible, they will be going to the Borough. So all three elementary students, I mean, schools will have students that are newcomers, and that's part of the ongoing migrant crisis as we know. So that is all supported by funding from the state for newcomers, but we needed to increase in order to have reasonable class sizes. So we started with having kindergarten screening with those students on Monday to be able to acclimate and have families come over and get a tour of the Borough as well. So thank you to Mr. Worth and the teachers that came in to do that on Monday as well. And the last thing I'll say is, I had this in my letters that went out, I'm going to be doing a new superintendent spotlight, which is going to be a monthly publication, and that's going to spotlight, it's going to be students, it's going to be teachers, it's going to be programs, different things each month. September will be spotlighting personnel. And then also, you might see things such as recommendations of a particular book or something like that. So lastly, I will say that part of my message back to staff was based on two different books from the summer, and one of them was "When You Wonder Your Learning," and it's Mr. Rogers, and it's "Enduring Lessons for Raising Children, Curious, Creative, and Caring Kids." And connecting the lessons from way back and his practices and what was there are very much true today. And then the second book in connecting was another book that I read this summer, which was "The Anxious Generation," and it's how the great rewiring of childhood is causing an epidemic of mental illness. And that one's by Jonathan Haidt. So a couple of great books, really connecting what we're all here for, for students, and how that connects and the importance of what we do and how we go about doing our work. It's much more than just the academics. As we have always talked about at this table, it is really the whole child and meeting social, emotional, and the academics and putting all of that forward. Because in order to have the academics piece, you need to have all the other pieces that are there as well. If any questions?
Great books. Nice selections. Those are great. Regarding the additional kindergarten classroom at the Borough, are there, or with that addition, are there other educational supports that are necessary that just go on, A with the numbers, B with the profile of kids that you all know about currently?
So with all of our kindergarten classrooms, we're very fortunate, and a lot supported by the budget here, by you, to have a full-time educational assistant in each kindergarten class. We will have that same in that kindergarten class that's added. And then the three English language learner teachers that we hired last year, all three of them are back with us. So it's really working with Mr. Michael Azic and with those teachers and with principals to look at the service delivery and the needs of the students in order to provide those services and what their schedules look like, and they're going to adjust some based on the numbers in each of the schools. At this point in time, some of our students are starting to transition out or move to other permanent housing in other districts. And so I've been working very closely with the hotel manager and looking at enrollment and what that looks like for us in our classrooms and working closely with the principals as well.
That's great. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you so much. Today was fantastic. It was my first back-to-school, back-to-school assembly with the teachers, and I loved when Mr. Gill got up and said, "Happy New Year." So happy new year to everybody, the new school year. So I love that. That was really nice.
And thank you for your message this morning to teachers and staff.
You're welcome. It was a lot of fun. It's great. A lot of positive work and energy. So I guess we're going to go right to Mr. Hyer and Mr. Muselli. Come on up here and update us on summer work in preparation for the opening of school. And you guys did not get a lot of rest and relaxation this summer, I'm sure.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. To echo the sentiments of Dr. Burrows and Dr. Burrows, this is a really exciting week. You have staff come back. Our staff's both technology and maintenance, as you know, have been working all summer, whether it's upgrading technology or getting the buildings ready for staff to come back and to see it all kind of come together as teachers are arriving at the building to prepare to welcome students next week. It really is pretty exciting, and when you can see how it comes together, right, you have that aha moment, that feeling of accomplishment. So this is an exciting week, and we've done, I think, a pretty good job getting everything ready, and I think that today was a pretty successful day. So again, just wanting to thank both the technology staff, our staff is super. You know, everybody in our department, whether it's our support specialists or our network support team, and even our department administrator, administrative assistant, you know, today helping teachers get their interactive boards set up and get their laptops set up. You know, everybody's all hands on deck. With that said, too, we really couldn't do what we do without the support of Tony's team. It really is a team effort to get everything done and get everything set up. And it's almost like a well-coordinated dance throughout the summer between our two teams, whether it's getting equipment out of rooms, getting the rooms cleaned, and then getting the equipment back into the rooms. It really is quite the team effort. So some of the highlights from this summer, you know, Dr. Burrows had shared with you at the end of this last school year, you know, some of the technology planning that we've done and aligning that to also with our capital plans. So a lot of the work we did this summer was putting that plan into motion. So I'll highlight some of those things, but we refreshed two grade levels of student computers in terms of our capital planning. Our goal is to really try to get to that ability to replace one grade level in each grade, grade band, being elementary, middle, and high school per year, to be able to keep the equipment that our students are using relevant and capable of using the software and doing the things that we want them to be able to do and experience with their learning. We also replaced the student, sorry, the teacher laptops. We replaced teacher laptops with more capable, full-featured laptops with larger screens and keyboards. These laptops replaced the previous Netbook laptops or smaller form factor laptops that teachers were using in addition to their desktops. What we found is being one-to-one, you know, having the desktop and the fixed computing environment that our pedagogy and our curriculum is looking, really requiring teachers to be more mobile throughout the classroom. And it's really having students be more interactive and students interacting with technology and not just the teacher, per se, in the class. With that, we also started to implement our digital displays. So a lot of our projectors, we're seeing that we're getting about 10 years out of a projector, which is a pretty good lifecycle on them. This year, we started our projector refresh. So interactive displays have been out now for about six or seven years, gaining popularity. The cost coming down, they've become more affordable. And what we found is that doing kind of a cost-benefit analysis with the cost of labor being so high in this economy, that it's much less expensive for us to install an interactive display than it is a projector, right, in terms of the, you know, in terms of the labor. Tony's team, the maintenance team, you know, this past week, they installed, I think, about eight or nine displays in a couple of days. You know, we were kind of planning on getting two installed, you know, so we could start to professional development and then go from there, and they just kind of started.
On a roll.
Yeah, getting right through them. So, you know, the cost of labor being significantly less than the projector, and then, too, the cost of these displays have come down. I was up in the science wing for a PD today. I was in the back of a science lab. I must have been close to 35 feet from the front of the classroom, and I, all the lights on, I could clearly read the text from the screen. It's truly impressive. So, and again, this being, you know, better for students in terms of being able to see throughout the whole classroom, not being sitting, they're not needing to sit in the dark, right, for instance, you know, a better learning environment for them, but also new features that enable students to be able to project wirelessly from their laptops. So if students are presenting or if a teacher wants to highlight work that a student group is doing, that they can be entered into a wireless queue essentially, and the teacher can allow them to project, you know, their laptop screens as well. So a lot of new opportunities there. In addition to, you know, some of the new hardware that was deployed, just upgraded wireless access in the high school and the middle school, again, needing to really support, you know, in terms of capacity and speeds, in terms of the wireless now being one-to-one. But we also had a number of software upgrades and things in the backend. Really important, we implemented, at the end of this past school year, MFA authentication for teachers, so multi-factor authentication. So if you have a mobile banking app, for instance, you're probably familiar with needing to do a two-factor authentication to log in. This is super important in terms of protecting our digital learning environment. You know, throughout COVID, you'd see in the news, right, that, you know, digital learning being disrupted, learning operations being disrupted. You know, this security feature really does provide an additional layer of protection that's really critical, really, in this times that we live in, in terms of, you know, cyber, cybercrime and cyber incidents. So again, in addition to the hardware, a number of software upgrades, the MFA, we also have been upgrading a lot of our systems to Windows 11, trying to keep our software as current as possible. And then completing the state reporting requirements for the state, supporting scheduling, rosters, updating rosters for our digital learning resources, Microsoft Office 365 and Teams in the middle of the high school level, providing this level of automation around the digital learning applications, whether it's with single sign-on to make it easier for students to log in, make it easier for teachers to log in, continuing to kind of refine those upgrades and updates that we've been doing. See if I missed anything here. Couple additional things I want to highlight. I know we've talked about upgrades that we've had in terms of security to the buildings. You know, this work is constant. I feel like last year I was sharing with you some upgrades to E911 and security cameras we make. We continue to refine those processes as well. So next week, again, upgrading our E911, making sure that we have locations, interior, like room numbers and locations and where every telephone is. And then also making sure that if a call is disconnected from 911, that a 911 operator can call back into that phone, right? So if for some reason there's a medical emergency and like it's disconnected, that the operator can call back in. So just implementing some additional E911 measures in the next coming weeks that will make sure that we're not only compliant with all the E911 regulations, but that we have safe buildings where people can get emergency services when they're needed, right? So lots of times our buildings are used over the weekends or in the evening, maybe in the gym area or athletics programs or programs in the CAF, where there's not operations in terms of the building, in terms of administrative staff in the office, right, to greet people when they come in, if somebody needs to call 911, that that information can get to the people that need it so that they can respond. And then I'll just share a plug. If you don't have the School Messenger app, you know, School Messenger is a, it's an application that we use to send email, to send push notification, to send voice calls. We use this to communicate closures due to snow, information about events and educational programming, opportunities for our families here in town. If you download the app, you can update your information, you can select your preferences around how you'd like to receive those notifications. If you haven't downloaded, I highly recommend it, especially as the school year starts. There's quite a bit of information that gets sent out.
Just from a parent's lens, it's a great tool to absences, late, things like that, just to add on to your advertisement board. It really is amazing.
Yes, absolutely. So that's something that was added over the last year or a year and a half is through the School Messenger app, too. You can report student absences, you can provide notes if there's, you know, if a student has a medical appointment or, you know, if there's a legal obligation or things that you want to provide documentation in accordance with the school attendance policies, you can do that securely right through the School Messenger app as well. So, again, just really want to thank all of our staff. It really is amazing. We have a great staff. They're very dynamic, like I said, everybody, it's all hands on deck, you know, and really, whether it's maintenance or technology, we really couldn't do it, you know, without the team effort across the board.
For sure.
Good evening.
Hey, Tony.
So, yes, the floors are shining, and they're going to shine for a little while, but, you know, you know what happens after the winter comes around. But I have to say, I have to thank the team, you know, the custodial staff, the maintenance staff. They all take pride in what they do because, you know, they know that it's going to be wrecked in no matter what time. But it's like, they still do it and they love doing it, and that's what it's all about, you know, just getting the place looking good and keep up as much as we can with it. And so we did all the floors throughout the district, stripping wax. The Borough is a little different because that's all rubber flooring, so they go in and they kind of do a deep scrub, and then they polish it, but there's no wax involved in that one. And then, of course, all the carpets get shampooed and all that, and the furniture gets taken out and washed and put back in. So it's like, it's a yearly thing that they have to do anyway, so. So that's all been done in the tables. And also, you know, a lot of furniture comes in, the desks, and they end up getting rid of the old desk, and we end up putting new desks together. And a lot of times, it's the custodial that helps us with that, too. And we've done quite a few things this year. We've converted a language lab at the high school, and we made two classrooms out of it. We did a new trainer's office setup kind of room for them, which really was needed. And it just goes on to all kinds. We did some, you know, we added a new HVAC in the admin area, new, we actually renovated the kitchen, too, that we kind of needed for a while. And we did some stuff in the auditoriums, too. Over at the high school, we added new side curtains and the back curtain, they're all ripped and all that. And over at the Ahearn, we've, they've added new wireless microphones with the earpiece and just to kind of make things, you know, stuff gets old and wears out and all that. We did the vestibule over at the entrance over at the Ahearn. There's a new carpet coming in, and we're still waiting on to do some glasswork in there. We're doing school glass on that entrance also. And let me see what else. All the filters have been changed throughout the whole district, light bulbs, tiles that get damaged. We've been installing these, what do they call them, the monitors that you guys?
Yeah, the interactive displays.
And a lot of whiteboards, too, you know, a lot of times. The guys have all been really, really busy. We do have a few things that are still in the process. You know, we're doing a BDA system over at the Ahearn. I got a couple of compressors should be in this week for the Ahearn for one of the rooftop units. I believe we're getting a new scoreboard for the high school for the gym. A lot of that stuff is also delay with, you know, getting inventory and all that, but we've been at it for a while. And adding outlets where they, you know, we have to, a lot of times, teachers move their desk and go from one play, ah, we need an outlet there, we need a, so we get that together. And like I said, we, you know, we worked a good together because a lot of times I'll say, okay, if the teacher's going here, what else are they going to need, you know, some CAF 5, this or that, and that all kind of works out. And let me see what else. All the grease traps were done, just during the process. They'll be back tomorrow to finish up the tailor on the, every year we do, we mulch all the playgrounds, just, you know, so make sure that, you know, no liability there, anything like that. We did actually six, we did six classrooms at the IGO, rubber flooring. We had some VCT tile on top of wood there, and that just never works out too good. So the rubber kind of, you know, moves with it, and so that's been good. So we kind of completed that whole one side of the IGO. And like I said, we're just ongoing, ongoing stuff, whiteboard. But like I say, I have to thank the staff and everybody, even Aaron's guys, too, because they also help us a lot, too, when it comes to like doing building automation system. You know, I know how to run it and stuff, but I couldn't tell you what server it's going to and all that. And that's what, you know, his team comes in handy and that's about it. I mean, go on and on, but it's just.
The honeydew list is endless.
Oh, we did the paving at the high school.
Oh, the paving that.
Yes, we did it by the tennis courts, and we did, we actually expanded the area by the music because there was, everybody was parking on the grass over there and stuff. So we actually got that done yesterday, talk about close, but, but like I said, we just keep at it, that's all, just make it better.
Thank you.
Tony shared that one of the projects he's working on, we've been working on together for a number of years. We were able to complete the high school through a grant, but the BDA at the middle school, just talking about, you know, some of the thoughtful planning that happens, whether it's a result of, you know, the strategic planning that we do, looking at building safety. But what that is, it's a bidirectional amplifier system.
Oh, okay.
So a lot of times when you hear about emergency response, right, is the criticality of the, being able to communicate, first responders being able to communicate. What that system does is it makes sure that all of our first responder radios, so police and fire, they're two-way radios, and then also the two-way radios that we use within the school district to communicate for emergency response, that those work in all the areas of the buildings, right?
Bus, too, transportation.
Yeah, the bus and transportation as well, that those frequencies work, whether you're, you know, in the boiler room or you're in a classroom, right, that they work, you know, very well and reliably throughout the building. So if there is a need for emergency response, that those emergency responders can communicate with our partners at SAMRAC, at the regional 911 center and amongst each other, and then also, too, within, amongst the agency. So, you know, that's, it's really, you know, a lot of, again, the kind of thoughtful planning around safety and, you know, being able to kind of partner up and do some of these things, working with the fire department, our colleagues at the fire department, and do these things and do them well and at a significant value to the town as well.
Thank you. You guys make a dynamic duo and you got a lot of stuff done this summer. I'm exhausted just thinking of that list.
That's the only time we can really get down to do it right, you know.
I know. Wow.
Sure is not, it's not as long as everybody thinks.
I think the students and teachers might disagree with that.
Like eight weeks, maybe seven.
But yeah.
It's not even eight weeks anymore.
No, it's not.
It's short, too. And then, you know, like everybody, you know, our staffs, but, you know, the companies that we need to partner with and liaise with, right, a lot of people on vacation throughout the summer, too, so.
Yes.
It makes it even harder to get things done. You know, everybody wants to spend time with their families, the kids are out from school, so it's a big, it's a big lift for everybody.
Middle school in the borough is pretty much half full, pretty much full. I mean, there's classes going on till like the beginning of August and it's like, at the end we're biting on it, can we get it done? You know what I mean? That's crunch time, you know?
That's right.
So it's, but it's good that we got it down to two schools.
Really, it's two weeks that we don't have students in most of the buildings, yeah.
So the guys are good. They try to get around and try to do stuff, like if I know we're going to be using this classroom for like, we'll try to get in there before they get in there and then, you know, and touch it up afterwards. We have to, otherwise we couldn't get it done.
Everyone always says channel, scheduling is the most challenging part of a job and it really is. It sounds like you guys have, like you said, like doing a dance, figuring everything out and just scheduling everything, so.
You'd be amazed how the staff can figure out to get around in the buildings. There's a hallway and there's wax and somebody's like, go in this closet and there's a door in the back that goes into that room.
Oh, yeah.
They figure out how to get around pretty, pretty well, yeah.
No, that's fantastic. You guys are amazing. Thank you for everything.
So I, we often forget, I think, the complexity and the challenge of keeping our schools running and current and prepared for the future that happens behind the scenes. We spend a lot of time in these meetings talking about what happens in the classroom. We spend a lot of time talking about, you know, the students, but we don't spend a lot of time or nearly as much time as we should appreciating the work that you and your teams do to make sure that the learning environment is clean and ready and safe and, again, ready for the future. So, and you both do it based on, you know, my, listening to this for over the years, you both do it or you and your teams do it with consistently looking at what is the best value and always keeping in mind what makes the most sense, not only from a functional standpoint, but also from a monetary standpoint or a budget standpoint. And I'm very grateful for that because that is something that we do need to be concerned with always and clearly you're able to take that into consideration, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments, Bob? Thank you guys so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it. It's probably been a long day. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have the review of substitute teaching and substitute nurse rates. And we do have action on this.
So I'll start with that. So in your packet, you have a revised substitute salary schedule for your review and hopefully approval. So when determining these rates, the district did do a review of the surrounding town rates to make sure that the goal was to have a competitive salary schedule that were assisting getting substitutes for the district. The last time that it was updated was in November of 2021, so it's been three years since you've done an increase in your salaries for the substitutes. And in this salary schedule, there was some changes in the intermediate term substitute certified teacher as well as a long-term substitute certified teacher, which previously you had just the bachelor's degree. And now there is a separate rate for those who have a bachelor's and a master's degree. In the long-term substitute that are over 90 days, those would be the only substitute rates that are benefit eligible, and that is because by law, if you're working 90 days, then you're eligible for the benefits. They are a limited benefit eligibility, which is insurance, MTRS, prorated sick days. So that would be that. If you have any questions.
I actually had a quick question. With the rates, is, was 100 what we were at? Was it an increase to 110 here, these two rates? I'm sorry, maybe I'm reading this.
Yeah, the rates that you have are the increase. I can tell you what they were previously, if you'd like.
Okay, so the 100 and 110 for the.
100 and 110, previously it was 95 and 100.
Gotcha, okay.
Did you want me to go through all of them?
No, 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 I'm fine. I just was curious.
Yes.
Thank you.
Why the two?
Excuse me?
Sorry, why the two numbers under the?
The 100 and the 110.
If you go to the details, 100 is per day for days one through 15, and then 110 would be starting on day 16. So there is a schedule on.
I don't think we got that, but thank you.
It wasn't, was it in the packet? Yeah, she said it.
Oh, that didn't, sorry.
No, that's okay, but to that end, that's kind of where the questions are. Like, just, just the, yeah, the.
The one that I have is different than the one that.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Yeah, what Sarah's asking, my questions, too.
Yeah, there's details on the side. I mean, I can pass it around or make.
No, no, that's fine.
No, no, just.
It goes by the number of days.
Okay.
So like the first one would be 100 per day for days one through 15, and then 110 starting on day 16.
Through what?
And that would be for the no degree bachelor's degrees certified teacher. The school nurse is just per day, so that's 190 per day.
Perfect.
And then the intermediate term substitute is per day for more than two weeks but less than 90 school days, and that's the one that's not eligible for benefits. That's the 190. And then you go to the intermediate term substitute, which is for more than two weeks but less than 90 days. That one is not eligible for benefits, but once you get to the greater than 90 school days, that's when it is eligible for benefits.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I will send you this update.
Thank you, yeah, I think it just got cut off on the printing, but we, I appreciate it.
Oh, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the revised substitute salary schedule as presented this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Questions? No, hearing none, all in favor? 500, thank you very much. Okay, we shall, thank you, Karen. We shall move on to, we are going to vote to approve the 2024, 2025 school district goals. And those are also here in our packet. We have the, the goals. Functions and responsibilities are all under the theme, correct? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, yeah, okay, just, there's two sheets here, just want to be precise.
Good.
So we worked on this, oh, just to give a quick, I don't know, if that's okay, I'll give a quick little synopsis. We worked on this at length in our retreat, which was not televised, where we got to kind of wordsmith some of this and rework what we felt strongly about. So we did a lot of work and got a lot of done, a lot done in a short amount of time. It was really productive and constructive. And I just want to take a minute to thank Brent and Nate for your gusto, I'm going to use that word, in wanting to develop, in wanting to develop a welcome packet or a new member guide. That's something you guys kind of put together and you also made a rather aggressive commitment to review all the policies. And when I say aggressive commitment, I thought that you guys really, you're taking on a lot, a lot of work, a real heavy lift to look through all the policies in the Foxborough Public Schools, to go over them and revamp them and rework them and make sure everything is up to date. And I just, I just wanted to take a minute and thank you because that is not a small feat by any stretch of the imagination. So thanks for your commitment to that and for your commitment to the policy subcommittee, so thank you. It was a, it was a great night and I think we got a lot accomplished. Does anyone have anything they want to add or questions, comments?
I'll just add, as far as the policy subcommittee, we need to look at the concussion policy. That is one that's upcoming.
I thought, I thought you were being funny.
Nope, actually, we do. I just wanted to put that out there, so that needs to be on our list. A lot of it is the different practices and things that we do that comes out of MGH. So we have those on our website, but as far as the policy itself, just referencing really is what it needs to do.
Okay. And that's ready to go, right? Okay, then we'll put that up front. Thank you.
I have two questions. The first one is on the first page under section two, student success.
Yep.
The fourth bullet.
Two, three, four.
Monitor and assess effective inclusion and co-teaching practices. And I neglected to pull out this document from last year, so I don't know if this is just a direct copy from last year or not, but provide an annual update in March of 2025. Is there a different way to word that? Because if this is school committee functions and responsibilities, we are actually not providing the annual update. We are being given an annual update, if I understand that correctly.
So.
I just want to make sure that we are not on the hook to provide the update.
Maybe review annual update?
Better?
Yeah, I just don't.
No, no, you're right.
I don't want anyone coming back saying we didn't provide, we're giving, given an update as part of our public meeting.
Review, cross out provide and replace with review.
That sounds good, Sarah.
Any other?
Yeah, and then my second question was just on what Sarah was talking about, which is the review of the entire policy manual. Are you, is the policy subcommittee planning on using any of the services provided by MASC to figure out where to start? And do, is there a cost associated with that?
No cost. It was, we discussed it with representatives of MASC briefly that night and the relief in their minds was that we were actually, somebody from our committee was going to actually just scan through all the policies, because the last time it was done, as far as Nathan and I can tell, and Nathan, correct me if I'm wrong, we thought was, was it 2008? Was, and so making that, so one, we thought it would be better to do that more regularly. MASC happens to heartily agree.
For clarification, the policy manual has been updated since 2000.
Yes, it has.
But a complete overhaul has.
Yeah, it's more, yeah, so, yeah, the school committee has been dutifully, in conjunction with admin, updating things as laws change, as district policy changes. It's more just going through and laying eyes and thoughtful minds on policies, which may, still may not need to change, but some policies written in 1984, for example, prohibiting alcohol on school grounds, which we're so in favor of prohibiting that. However, the idea was that, you know, just having members of this body review, review those.
You have more than answered my question, so I appreciate, yeah.
Well, that's rare for me.
Yeah. So again, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were using their services because if.
Absolutely.
And that if there was an additional cost, we were, unfortunately, I was not able to stay for that portion of the meeting, so.
To our knowledge, there's not.
No.
But it is possible, probable, that at the end of this review, there'll be a handful of things that we have questions about that we'll put out to MASC, members of the full committee, if need be admin and council and things of that nature, but that's to be determined.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for answering that.
Also, keep in mind the dues that you pay to MASC. That covers a lot of that as well.
She's right.
Yep. No, thank you. They were, they were very excited. I was very grateful and I think it'll be a really worthwhile project. So with the exception of that one change, did anyone have any other changes, questions, comments on that? Because we do have an action on this.
If there aren't, may I, okay, if there are no other additions, then I would, I move to accept the Foxborough Public Schools 2024 through 2025 school district goals and school committee functions and responsibilities as presented with the revision suggested by Ms. Ladani and Mr. Canfield.
I actually wanted, I'm sorry, Brent, I want to revise that because right below it, I should have just recommended this, we, right below it, the next bullet point says progress report annually. Can we just say progress report annually in March, you know, around March of that, of 2025? Or just progress report annually on that bullet? Was that, does that save us?
Should we say review progress report annually?
No, I, no, I'm okay with progress report annually, but can we just take that same phrase and put it in the, put it in the bullet before?
In March 2025.
Parallel form, you mean?
Right.
I'm fine with that.
Just for mirroring and.
It means, yeah, no, that's fine. With me, with me only.
Would you like to revise your motion?
Yes, I will revise my motion.
Sir?
No, and thank you for the detail, I really appreciate it.
So we're getting rid of the entire sentence, provide annual update in March 2025.
And then right below it.
With progress report annually.
Yep.
No, that one would be review annual update in March 2025, four bullets down. Then the fifth bullet at the end where it says progress report annually, we're going to add in March.
No, that, I actually wanted the other way. I wanted what Jamie suggested, which is, because that takes the requirement to.
So take out.
Correct, and that way it just can carry over every year and you don't have to update it.
Okay, strike, okay, enough.
Oh, that's simpler.
And replacing it with progress report annually.
Review, yeah, review annual update.
Just progress report annually, just like we have.
Okay.
Because that's part of our function.
That actually helps by taking out March because we've kind of gone back and forth between March and April each year when that's been reported, depending on how the dates fall.
Right, and I'd rather have a, I'd rather have an update that you're comfortable with since that, since that, that date is not arbitrary, but like the exact date is arbitrary.
Yeah.
So, all right, I appreciate that. Chair, may I revise the motion?
Please.
All right, all right, revising the motion. I move that we adopt the Foxborough Public Schools 2024 through 2025 school district goals and school committee functions and responsibilities with the changes discussed this evening. Second.
All right. Any further discussion on this? Questions, comments from anyone? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right, 500 on that one as well. Thank you for your thoughtful commentary and I think we did some good work there. Thank you all. All right, next, review of recurring school committee agenda items by month. Now on this, I actually did catch one thing I wanted to point out, if that's okay, we'll dive right in unless there's any objections. In September and in March, we see review warrant signing procedures. Back in May, we had a discussion that maybe it would be better to review it in May annually. So if we can just maybe take those two out and maybe move them to May so that annually we'll review warrant signing procedures. Does anyone have any questions, problems, comments on that?
I remember the meeting.
Nope, I remember that. Nice catch and that's an improvement. Thank you.
Everything else looked pretty good. Anyone have any other comments on this? All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
You don't need a motion.
Oh, sorry, this one's information only, so thank you.
Aye, aye.
No motion needed, thanks a lot.
Cheers.
All right, everything looks great. Thank you very much. Now, community update. I have a couple things myself, but does anyone else have a community update they want to, want to add? Brent?
No, well, I was just going to say thanks to all faculty, staff, support staff and senior leaders. Many casual and some not so casual reports that the event at the high school today with the link crew and the transition meeting was stellar and deeply appreciated by people who had no nervous. by people who had no nervousness and some people who had profound nervousness prior to the event. So, um, anyway, so just my view outside the submarine, that it, a lot of incredible feedback about that.
We were a little nervous of breaking through when they hold up the big butcher paper that's like, welcome, we want them to like run through and like break it. And so as we were standing waiting, we're like, no, run through, run through. And finally they did.
Do we get a video of it?
It's okay.
Um, one of the teachers was, was capturing it, yes, but the rest of us were all like clapping them through to get them to run through.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Instead of the finish line, it's the start line. I love it.
Start strong.
Yeah. Michelle, any, anything going off pack or?
Uh, no, the special.
A C pack, sorry.
Special education parent advisory council will start meetings up again in October, so please check their Facebook page if you are interested, but I will give more updates as we get closer.
Thank you very much. Nathan?
Just best of luck to all the students for another great year.
Fantastic. Rob?
Uh, two things. Uh, one, uh, I will not be reporting as part of the, the rec department liaison on events. I plan, I hope that everyone can use the rec department calendar to figure out what events they have going on, but I have, for your informational purposes, included the agendas, or the agenda from the last meeting, and my plan is to include the agendas for all the upcoming meetings as we have them. Um, if you are interested in how anything was voted on, um, I'm more than happy to provide that. Their minutes are sometimes slow to be released, I've found, um, so if you do have any questions about any of the votes that were taken, I'm happy to answer any questions there. And the second one is, um, for students at the high school, I know that they are going to be starting the process for the new musical. Uh, I think it's going to be Your Good Man Charlie Brown. I happen to know the director, um, and that director is very excited about coming back to the high school and working with them. So anybody that's interested in musical theater, uh, Your Good Man Charlie Brown, and, uh, you can get information at the high school.
Okay, fantastic. Anything from anyone over here?
Just excited to welcome students back next week. Next Tuesday, school starts.
Yep.
Be there.
Happy New Year. Karen?
Um, I have to say, I really enjoyed the bus ride through, through Foxborough.
That good?
They've never had that in all the years of, of the first day of being new, so it was really fun.
That's awesome.
Got to see a lot of Foxborough.
We thank Todd Kaser for continuing to be our tour guide.
Oh.
Yes.
Such a nice tradition.
I didn't get to go on the bus. That's awesome.
How about you next year?
Thank you, that's awesome. That sounds so fun. Yeah. Um, so I have a couple updates. One is, um, MYA rewards. Yes, I'm back talking about MYA rewards, and you know I hate acrimen, acronyms, but Massachusetts Independent Insurance Association. Just for our board's edification, if you do not have your login, please get it ready. This year, the rewards are coming, first come, first served. So as a community update, I will actually be at the public safety building tomorrow at 9:30 for a First Amendment training as the school committee representative. Katie Lang, she's wonderful. She will be sending out a webinar list of webinars that will be, um, pertinent to school, um, and, and allow us to help tr, attempt to max out the, um, rewards through MYA, um, which come back to us in the credit. Keeping in mind that Zoom, they, they do have Zoom and in-person, like I'm attending tomorrow, classes that will be popping up here and there. So unfortunately, this year, we won't have, unfortunate and fortunate, we won't have that crunch in May to try to finish and get to the finish line, because once their rewards are used up, I, I honestly, I forget the amount, once, once they're used up, there's no more. So, um, in an effort to try to be proactive, um, just keep in mind, you may see some things from Jamie, Katie, and myself coming through regarding MYA. So if you can do them, great, if you can't, great, we'll continue to roll up our sleeves and do the best we can as a committee, so just wanted to mention that. The Happy New Year extends, extends to college too. Our Nate is taking off on, uh, Sunday, so congrats to him. And congrats to all of our graduated seniors onto their next chapter, um, just like freshman year in high school and fifth grade can be nerve-wracking, so can the first day of this next chapter of their lives. So congratulations to all of them and thanks for being here today, Nate. Um, and last but not least, I just want to put a quick ad out. The town audit committee does have a school committee appointed representative. That representative could unfortunately only serve two of their three-year term, so they're actually looking for a community member.[1723.66]